Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this council meeting to order this the regular session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, please say that's on, being held on Tuesday, February 20th at 7:02 PM on council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Joni Giacchino.
Yeah.
Councilmember Frank Davis. Mayor Ken Budge. Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mal Sued.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein.
Yeah.
City staff, Stephen Pockins, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Landers, personnel director, Matthew Gurney, public works director, Tim Cox, police chief, Jay Ritchie, deputy police chief, Jim Richardson, fire chief, and so it's not here, and that's it.
Thank you. For the moment in silence tonight, I'll ask everyone to stand here in a minute for a moment of remembrance, and then we'll say a bunch of allegiance and then move forward. So, everyone have a rise. Well, good evening, everyone. Quite momentous to see the chamber full, right? And, but it's also quite, and then goes on, another subject which I'd like to make a couple announcements about. It isn't about me, it isn't about the council, but we had a very, very uplifting chance with Good Hope Monday, to start the new rebuilding of city hall after a fire, and then who knows, not more than three days later, on the evening of, heaven forbid, Valentine's Day, we had a massive capacity downtown with two businesses that were basically destroyed. This is dear to my heart, and I feel deeply affected by, by this, and I know all of our council members do, and I just want to reassure everybody that, that we as a city take this very seriously, and that we will, we will move forward in a judicious and methodical way to handle this. Our first priority according to right now is, I'm trying to say, bear with me, I'm running out a few hours of sleep, and I was today all day with our, excuse me, our forensic structural engineer that we were able to bring down last night, and we called around in a lot of different places that I probably shouldn't have been at my age, but a lot of pictures, and we found out a lot of things. Thankfully, we were able to move forward, and we saved every bit of the yard out of the Tang Gallery today. That was an effort, for sure. We, I wanted that out of there as soon as we knew we could do it safely, myself and two firefighters did the majority of bringing it out, and they were very happy to take it onward. And so, that was important. We opened another business today, we moved and his killer bees up, I wanted him to just set up on the street, he has no power, but if I'm fine, I can do it. So, we are making those steps that we need to do, and with this highly effective, or I should say, background person that we were able to find as a structural engineer, I mean, this gentleman has been on nine eleven, he was at the Oklahoma mural building that blew up, he was the first structural engineer there to try to save that, he's been on multiple different FEMA situations with hurricanes, he has a long history of this, he's part of the search and rescue out of the Phoenix area for FEMA, and a structural engineer for that. So, we're very blessed that he was able to come down on short notice. We, city manager, myself, and others spent the weekend chasing down whoever we thought was the most qualified and was able to get here as soon as possible. So, he finished his work today and is heading back to Mesa where he's based out of, and will have us a report. First report will be tomorrow, and soon after that, we'll, we'll have a more detailed report. So, with my meeting with him today, I mean, it's all about us being able to take this damage assessment and have a better understanding of the steps that we need to make to help with our historical reservation, zoning codes, and so forth. So, the next step that we will be taking will be, once he gives us the plan, we will go out and contract with a contractor, understand these are emergency measures, so we won't be doing weeks of RFPs to make this happen, we'll make it happen soon. He'll have a plan where we'll be standing up metal beams on the outside of the buildings on three sides to stabilize it. Some of the upper harnesses will have to come down because they are not in any shape that can stand any wind or anything else, but ninety-five percent of everything from the roof of those buildings up will be able to be stabilized. That's our first order of safety, that's what we as a city are responsible for. So, we will be making the area safe. Once that happens, then we can put people inside those buildings safely, and that will bring in our forensic team that will start looking at the cause of fire, origin, and, and possible termination, that will be our firefighter inspectors and also the ATM. After that, that then we turn the buildings over to the, to the owners. Now, between that, we will be meeting with the owners and their insurances and so on, and get all that information gathered so that we can formulate a plan for the damage. But, once we have a building stabilized, the plan is we'll have one street open on Main Street, that will be a downwards lane and pedestrians that will be on one side, and an upward will still be running up Subway Street. But, that will open Main Street for the most part, will have flow in both directions. Unfortunately, Commerce Street will have to still remain closed because part of the big structure is to hold the building up so it doesn't, doesn't collapse, will impede the ability for Commerce Street to, to be used. So... I've been involved in these things over my years, and, and probably have my little fingers in this more than I should have, but honestly, I think that we're moving in a, and, and absolute best, I've seen in many of these types of things that I've been involved with before, in the last five days, we, we have a forensic structural engineer that will be giving us some plans. I don't know exactly how long it will take us to find the correct construction through and stabilize things, but, I guess, I will know more than a few days, a date that we'll be able to open up the rest of Main Street and move forward. Once all that is done, we can take a deep breath and start to look at what, what is the final outcome that can be achieved. So, that's the ways that we're old, not too far, but at that point, there'll only be the businesses that were burnt and the two businesses on each side. There was a lot of damage to both buildings on both sides of the, the two buildings that were burned. Within both of them today, for some time, and their people will be bringing in their, their own structural people and also the working with ours to see what will happen. So, I wish I could just say, okay, two weeks we'll be here, and one week we'll be there, and so on, but I'm on the indication that I want us to go slow, I want us to not use knee-jerk reactions, we will make, but we will do this judiciously, and we will get through this. And the last thing I want to say in my comments is that, that I really want to thank the business owners, I want to thank the public, and the people that are, that are coming to, okay, the tourists, whatever, to keep our commerce still going as best we can. It's, it's, as mayor, it is very moving that, that there can be a lot of competing sides in this, and yet we can still work together for, for the goal that we have, which is to try to get our Main Street back to closes we possibly can as it was before. So, with that, I would like to give any council members a chance, if they would like to say something, I think Mel wanted to, and anyone else if they'd like to, this, this is a really big one for us, and this is not something we face every day as, as a city. And, and just know transparency is my thing, if you want to know something about what was inspected or whatnot, the records are there, do a records request, I'm not scared of any of that, I want this, there's no hidden agendas, there's nothing here besides that. I'll turn the time over for a mo, for a moment to Mel and then anyone else.
Thank you, Mayor. I decided to speak on this because this hit me hard, first as a council person and as a businessman, most of these guys are fully affected, it's not just about structure, it's about people life, about people dreams. Sometimes we forget how hard these small businesses, people work, they work all day, seven days a week, even when they are not, they are shots, they are working. So, for me, it was a personal, and it has hit me hard, because I know most of these guys, how hard they work. Being in the bodega, I got to see most of them, they stop by, we talk, we talk about the business and how things going. And we have to realize sometimes when we see the business is busy, we're thinking these guys are making money, earning money, but most of the times, they're barely surviving. A small town like, a small town like Bisbee depends on tourism. These guys have employees who are going to be affected, their dreams have been devastated, I'm not going to sugarcoat this, but being devastated, and me and you, I know some of them have been working for years to build this business, and now they wake up and they have nothing. It's not a small thing, it's a big thing. I know they will survive, I get to talk of them, they come to me and we talk. This is like losing a child, because your business as a small business is your identity, and when you lose it, you lose your identity. The thing I would like to reassure, and thank you, Ken, I know you've been working very hard, we appreciate what you've been doing. We need to assure them, and we need to respect them. As a council people, we need to remember, we represent the people, as staff, we work for the people, we get paid for that. So, sometimes when people are going through the motions, they are lost, they don't know what's happening, what's going to happen to them, they don't know if you'll be able to pay your mortgage, it's not like they are employed and they're going to get their salaries at the end of the week, and they're going to get their two vacation paid, basically, they work every day to survive. So, as a council, we need to remember, and I know most of us do, that we represent the people, as staff, we work for the people, we get paid to work for the people. So, we need to respect them, we need to listen to them, and we need to communicate with them. And I was assured, I get to speak to Ken today, that's what we'll be doing, this is devastating, this is devastating, I hear it, I'm in the middle of it, these people come to me, we may not hear if it's not, and let me assure you, it's not just about the two buildings, it's all the surrounding buildings, there's some people who depend on these months, February and March, to make it, and now they've lost those days. Even though some of us were not heard directly, but we were heard indirectly. So, the one thing I will make sure that we do, that we are, as Ken said, we will do our best, and this is to the business people, because they're saying, they are asking, what's next, you don't know. It's not that they are picking, or they are, they just sometimes they don't know what's coming next, we need to respect their question and answer their questions. And address their concern. And we on the council, and I know my colleagues, we're all devastated by this, it's devastating, there's no two ways about it. I know a couple of the people right now, they have nothing, they're setting up places just to sell. It's not a small thing, and some of them, they may not have had, everybody assumed that everybody has a lot of insurance, and it may not be the case. And as public, we need to listen, we need to be, to support however we can. I just wanted to say this, and thank you, Ken, for allowing me to say this, and thank you.
Sure. Any comment, Leslie?
Sure. Hard to follow that, but, no, Mel's right, this is a huge thing, and I just wanted to let everyone, I'm going to get emotional now, in my word, who is affected know that I hear you, I see you, you know, you're welcome to come to me, and I'll do what I can for you.
Sure. Anna?
Well, I agree with everything that, that Mel and then Leslie have said, it's, it's been a rough go. And the mayor's correct, we were so happy on Monday, breaking ground for city hall, and that was such a devastating fire then, not realizing that a few days later we would be facing another one, and it was a tough one. I, I would like to thank the firefighters for all of their efforts and everything they've done. I'd also like to thank the surrounding agencies that, that came in and helped us. And we also had border patrol out there as well, so we had other law enforcement agencies as well, and it can get pretty chaotic, but everything, everything worked, everything went well, I mean, as, as well as it could, but, you know, I, I'd really like to thank Douglas though, with their aerial truck, it really, really saved us, and, and along with that, I'd really like to take this time to thank Brian Erst. He is a local, homegrown firefighter here, and he was fighting the fire, the city hall fire with our guys, and he was also fighting fire up there the other day. So, that, that kind of begs the question, why is our local town with other agencies? But, but I'd really like to thank Brian, because I know he's always there, this is his town, it doesn't matter what happens, if we ask, he will be there, so I did want to personally thank him. I'd like to thank the city manager, he was very hands-on that night, and we were able to relay messages back and forth, you know, us being up with Ashley and the pros there. So, thank you, Steve, for, for thinking, you know, handling things the way he did, and I'd really like to thank Mayor Budge. He's...
You can't take the firefighter out of the fight.
And that, you know, and that's what I told him, he says, well, I probably shouldn't have done this, I said, no, you're a firefighter first, you're a firefighter's fire, and I appreciate that, and I see that, having grown up in the firehouse all my life. So, thank you, Mayor, for everything that you've done, everything that you are doing, and then our city crews, public workers out there, and getting to the pump house and, and wherever else they could. And then, you know, everybody in the office, building phone calls, questions, news people, I mean, it's, it's just been, it's been a lot for a few days, but I'm really happy that we're moving forward because we are, we're making progress, we're moving forward, it was nice to hear what the structural engineers had to say, so I have no doubt that we have the best people on this, and it makes me happy that it's not going to linger like city hall did, but this group got that going as well, so we may not always agree, all of us, but we do work together and we work well, when we, you know, when it comes down to it, so I'm sure that once everybody gets their bearings together and about them, in true city fashion, true Bisbee fashion, we will gather and we will help those businesses win, and whatever it takes, I know that all of us will be there.
That was impressive.
Yeah, I would follow up with that, I can thank everybody that was involved in this, mayor, manager, fire department, police, you know, everybody pulled together, and to me, to my mind, it just shows and reinforces what a great town, what a great city we have, and a great group of people, you know, we can come together when there's crisis like this and, and work through it. I want to thank people for their patience, because it's going to take us a while to sort through this, and being a former builder, I just redo one thing at a time, and make sure that first thing is right, but we'll move on to the next, and that's going to be the case with this. So, I would again, thank people for their patience, and if, as Leslie said, I'm more than one as well, if there's anything I can do, people can contact me, and we'll, we'll be as responsive as we can.
Pretty much piggybacking on what everybody else has said, but...
I'm sorry, you're bringing up your hat outside.
But I, I think it's, it's wonderful too that...
They talked about...
We talked about a sense of community, but also a sense of how this community has expanded, how Douglas and Servis and every member, how they came together and became part of what they helped us, and without them, I don't know what would have happened, and it's wonderful to see how everybody came together like that, and it is going to be a, a long road ahead, but we work together as a community, we're everything together, you know.
I know, it's tough. What are the junior's, you know?
Coming and saying something after, I agree with everyone, and I appreciate the fact that this is really a community, and I want to thank all of the visitors, everyone, and everyone here in Bisbee that respected the trajectory of flow, the cars moving around and off the main streets, and the fact that they all respected what was going on, that allowed us to move, to do what was necessary.
Well, thank you all for that, and I'm just going to follow up with a couple more things because I have the mic. Yeah, so, there's been a lot of chatter out there, and some rumor and so on, and I just want to quickly clear a few things up. Already today, I've been on phone calls, not only with Senator Kelly today, and his, and his staff, and also Congressman Derholl, who will be coming to Main Street, encourage him to come by and look at the situation, and they've all pledged their help coming forward with us. I don't know, after twenty interviews, I quit counting, but I think we have the ear of a lot of people, I've had Phoenix, and National, and Local, and Tucson, and that's part of my job, and I hate to say it, but when the iron is hot, we, we want to strike. And so, that's been the other side of my point right now, and just to let you know, yes, we do have, have situations, but not be able to have a ladder trunk here, we do have situations of not necessarily having the most updated water system, it's not for lack of trying, all these are applications that we have been made in the last few years to do exactly that. FEMA has not elected to do so yet, but you know, what I've realized is, when you get congressional support, things can whip around in a big hurry, so that's my goal now, is to, to work outside and see, get everything we can and help that they've endured us up to now, and so, just to let you know, we have not been sitting back idly, la di da, in this waiting for the next tragedy, we have been trying to make stuff happen, we just haven't had the, maybe, what can I say, the year, but yeah, that's, we do now, and I will make the most of it, I guarantee you that, that's one thing I'm not afraid to ask, so, I'm not afraid to take a phone call, and that goes for any of you and all those out in public, I've been, my phone hardly ever stops ringing, and once I'm down in the tunnel like I was today, and fell and screwed up my hand, well, I'll, I'll answer it, so. All right, everybody, let's move on to general business, and our, of course, our, our first order is call the public, and I think we have five signed up, so, I'll, you're the first on the list, so please come up, and, because this is your house, we want to hear from you, that's the whole point.
Forgive my, my age and forever, but I'm, I don't know which way the mic goes.
It just goes to where you, and I'm all good.
I think you're okay, Al.
I, I guess I'm going to talk about another devastation, and what Mel said, because I'm going to talk about asking this council to have a proposal that calls for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, because, because that devastation is vast, and we're watching it on TV, and it hurts our souls, and they're taking our taxes, and that we're, we're paying for the weaponry, and we're funding Israel, and I have family in Israel, and we have, we have Palestinians here, we have Arabs here, we have communities here that are affected by what's going on there, and we don't need this kind of, I'm so sorry about what happened in Bisbee, and it's hard to piggyback on what, on this devastation, but there's that devastation, and we're part of the world, and I think as a, as a city, we want to express our, our grief and say, stop, stop this, ceasefire, just ceasefire, negotiate, and so I'm going to, I, I had something else to say, and I don't know what, but I don't want my taxes spent this way, I don't want to watch that devastation anymore than I, I, I wish Bisbee whole again, of course. So, I'm going to, I know I'm not a resident of Bisbee, so Ragatta Curry and Camper Verge have agreed to let me put this proposal, and hope that you put this on the agenda for your next meeting, I have two signed copies from Ragatta and Camper, and I have copies for the rest of you, and, and that's all. Yeah.
Thank you, Al, so, next one, none of these say exactly when you want to speak, if there's an item you want to speak to versus call the public, let me know, but Jennifer, Frank?
She, she's here for her presentation for the audit, so...
It's, she'll bear with me tonight, gang, that's four hours, so, Sarah?
Yes.
All righty, just say your name and...
So, my name is Sarah Proft, and I'm a resident of Bisbee, I'm here representing a group of downtown business owners and building owners, and for the past few years, we've been meeting informally to discuss issues that affect our businesses, our buildings, and our community. The events of the past week have brought into sharp focus many of our greatest concerns. The fire happened six days ago, and we know that the... The fire happened six days ago and we know that the city, employees, the council, all of you have been working incredibly hard and we so appreciate that. We also understand that other, that businesses and building owners, some of them were more directly impacted by the fire than others. We understand that the city has prioritized communications with those directly impacted and will support that. At the same time, Old Bisbee is a small community and business and commercial property owners need information to help us navigate the situation as well and to continue to serve our residents and our visitors. To that end, we've compiled a list of short and long-term issues that we'd like to bring to your attention. And I will say this, in listening to all of your comments earlier, many of these issues you're already thinking about. We just felt like it was important for us to put them down on paper as well. So in the short term, we, we'd like to highlight communication. And we understand that this is an evolving situation with many moving parts. But regular updates from the city regarding timelines, things like changes to road access and parking is essential to us. Posting press releases to the city website is fine, but we were hoping that maybe the city, you know, you have contact information for our businesses through our business licensing information. And maybe even last, when some of those press releases come out, would be more helpful and more effective way of reaching us as business people and building owners. To the marketing and the narrative of this, I come from the Met Hall Valley. We've had fires in 2014, 2017, 2018, a lot of experience reporting in communities that are severely impacted by fires. And currently, it feels like our narrative is we had a fire and we need to let folks know that, yes, we had a devastating fire, but we're still open for business and we're still here. We were hoping that maybe the Discover Bisbee website could be updated so that the homepage, instead of a call for contact information, had a call to action saying, come to Bisbee, there's still plenty to do here. Our Main Street is partially open and it needs your support right now. Businesses that have closed also need your support. Signage, I'm running out of time, so I'm going to go fast. With the Main Street partially closed, the need for signage to direct pedestrian and vehicular traffic is good. Visitors don't understand that all of the businesses on Main Street aren't closed. There are businesses that are open and that there is access to lower and upper Main Street through subway. Traffic being routed on subway, you need to understand that pedestrians are going to be in the street because there isn't actually a sign on part of it.
Go ahead.
All their routes through Old Bisbee via Plosson and Share have little or no actual directional signage. There's a cardboard piece of paper that says town this way at the bottom of Plosson. So if we can just work on a few of these things, that'd be great. And I have copies of this letter and I'd love to submit them to your considerations.
Please send them to city manager and.
And thank you again for all your things.
Some of those are, so yeah, please, we'll push that on. And it'd be on my desk tomorrow. Okay, Nicole? Can't quite make out the last.
It's France.
France, okay.
Easy one to know. I am Nicole France, I'm also a resident of Old Bisbee and I, I wanted to support the, the statement that Sarah just made and proclamation that she's cast along as well. I just would like to add to this and I want to say thank you, Mayor, for addressing particularly the concerns about the firefighting equipment and the water supply. That was my particular concern that I wanted to air. The unfortunate and very disconcerting feeling is that if we had another such incident tomorrow, we are not really in any better shape than we were a few days ago. And especially running a business that has hotel guests, that is a slightly terrifying idea. I think we are incredibly lucky that the hotel next door was not in any way affected and there were, there were no possibilities of the result of this. But honestly, this, this is one of the things that keeps me awake in the middle of the night. So thank you for understanding and addressing. I appreciate that this is not the first time that there has been concern about this issue. If there's any way that we can form perhaps some sort of task force across the community that helps support this, I think you have our, our full heartiest.
Thank you. And finally, Mark Gray.
I, I think I want to echo the concerns of, of France as you're speaking. I think we need to solve these problems, if only because of our insurance. It's one of my biggest concerns as a business and building owner in town. I was canceled twice last year, that's not an unusual story, to receive a check in the mail and be told that your fire insurance, your building insurance has been canceled. The fire rating, I'm told, is a five out of 10. I don't know how that, how that's come up with, I don't know if he does it. I've told different companies, have different ratings now, I guess. They probably don't share that because it's their secret sauce. But I think we should have an individual, a task force, somebody who's not me because as a business owner, you know, as a citizen, I can't really do what I need to do here to solve a problem. Somebody has to figure out how this system works, see what it takes, is it equipment, is it a fire break on the hillside? That we can get our fire insurance numbers down and not have my insurance canceled. Because if they were canceled tomorrow, I wouldn't blame them, I really wouldn't, and I wouldn't blame them because the things that concern me most are the things that happened and it would be, probably my structure would be a total loss. And it's worth less than it would cost to replace it, I'm quite sure of that. That really concerns me and that's something that should concern everybody in this town, especially in the downtown area now. And, and finally, I'd like to say we should have a timeline. I know that that's right now a little hard to do, but in order to make basic business decisions, you really need a timeline. I have people asking me for space to run, maybe, are we doing a pop-up shop? Are we doing a lease? Do they have money? Do they not to spend? So I think that a timeline would be super helpful just as soon as we can, even if it's a little bit flexible, as soon as we can get to a point, it'd be great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. We hear your concerns and thank you for addressing those and rest assured, we are listening and feel free to contact me anytime, any update or advice and we will, I will, I will be putting out press releases as soon as I have. That is all I can, so, you know. By days, we've, we've come this far, so. All right, really can't mention, I can't answer any call the public, so. I will move on now to general business, uh, we'll just move on now to accounts payable. Item number one, do I have a motion for a cost?
Numbers that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $427,003.65. Second?
I have a motion, second.
To approve account payable, now, any questions on accounts payables on the side? Seeing none, this side. All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve accounts payable in the amount of $427,003.55. All those paid, we can buy by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, there are none, the ayes have it, so moved. Item number two is the approval of the consent agenda. There are only two items tonight, one is the approval of a mitts from our council on a meeting on Tuesday, November 6th. And then second, there is the approval of an extension and premise patio permit submitted by Electric Brewing. I will pull item B just for comment and make a motion to approve item A as.
Sorry, Matt.
I'm a motion to approve, uh, I'm sorry, the consent agenda, item A, as shown, always bear, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, there are none, the ayes have it, so moved. The approval of the extension of patio premise for Electric Brewing. We just want to reiterate the situation that we still on and off have heard complaints about noise, so I just want them to be sure that as we approve this, that, that they follow the organs, which is the music is faced inward, not outward. And they try to limit the, the effect of, the effect of any noise problems at their business. Any other comments? All right, there are none, I'm like, I'm moved to approve consent agenda, item B, as shown.
Oh, sorry, Matt.
We have a motion, a second, to approve item B, always bear, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, there are none, the ayes have it, so moved. That's the consent agenda. Uh, we have no old business, so we're moving on to new business, the item three. This is a presentation by Jennifer that I called. This is our annual audit report. I haven't had the time to go over it like I would have normally, but I am very happy with the results and thank you very much. And please inform us of all the good things we do and that one or two never make.
Look at, I'm Jennifer Craig from Pittsburgh, I am happy to be back again this year. I love coming to Bisbee. I have all my favorite restaurants plotted and I love them while I'm down here. But I'm going to, I tend to go through these fast because I know you guys have a lot of business usually at your meetings, might be one of the most. And so if I, if there's anything that you want to ask along the way, please stop me and I will do my best and I'm certain. So I'm going to go to our first slide, which is our audit reports, usually what everybody clears about. So the very first report you'll find in your financial statements is your independent auditor's report. I'm happy to note that you have an unmodified opinion again this year, which is always outstanding. Towards the back of your financial statements, you have two reports. You have your report on compliance and internal control over financial reporting. Again, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. And I'd like to point out, for cities, your size, that is unusual not to have something, some mining, something. So I do want to make sure that that was acknowledged, I was happy with that. And then the very last report is your state compliance report, which is your HERP report on HERP money. Again, they'll find these over there. Okay, I'm going to hit the government-wide financial highlights. So you have two sets of financials in your financial statements, you have your full accrual statements, and then you have your fund statements. I'm going to touch on your government-wide first, which is the government as a whole, it is on full accrual. So your total net position or your equity ended at a little over $9 million at the end of the fiscal year. That is between your governmental funds and your proprietary funds combined. The city's net position increased $1.4 million over the prior year, which is again a positive trend. Over time, watching that number is a good kind of indicator on the health of the city, so it's always a good thing to keep an eye on. In your financial statements, when you have time, pages 10 and 11 in your M V N A, have those comparative condensed statements for the city of our whole. On to the next one, which we're just trying to touch on your capital assets. So capital assets ended the year at a bit over $28 million, that's net of depreciation, accumulated depreciation. And your long-term liabilities, if you remember last year, you had the bond issue with P S, P R S pay down. And it was a little bit of sticker shock because of the one-day recording delay. You have the pension liability and the bond on there. So this year, that pension liability has been reduced for that payment with the bond proceeds. On page 44, and you have your long-term debt footnote to kind of those tail. So as of year end, you ended at $33.7 million in long-term liabilities. With the falcon, just going to touch on the, if the bonds payable is at $28 million, that's the largest portion. Your net pension liability was down to $3.7 million. I'm going to get into the graphs. Now, these are going to be on your governmental fund, touching on your general fund and then your proprietary funds. The very first slide is your general fund balance sheet trend. The, the general fund continues to report a healthy fund balance, which is your equity. We had a decrease of $852,000 during fiscal year '23. That was in large part due to that transfer of the $2 million for the city hall that was transferred to the capital improvement fund. So, and this, keep in mind also that this is on a current resource focus, so it doesn't have debt, it doesn't have capital assets included in that equity. Going to go to the next slide, which is the general fund account trend. Keep in mind again, you have that $2 million transfer over into capital improvements fund this year for the city hall. So you ended the year at a bit over $2 million in the general fund and their unrestricted cash balances. I'm going to go to the next one, which is your revenue and expenditure trend. Keep in mind, when you book that transfer, it runs through as a transfer out and gets included in our expense number. So that is included in the $9.7 million that is on there. Typically, general fund, we expect to see these lines periodically crisscross as you accumulate resources for capital projects, those kind of things, and then in the later year, those get spent down. So we expect revenue and expense to crisscross. Over the past five years altogether, revenues have exceeded expenditures by approximately $1.4 million. That is excluding those, that bond, the bond and pension pay down and in that transfer that for the $2 million, because we didn't include that, the revenues that were received back in 2018, we're excluding the transfer as well. Okay, your enterprise funds, these funds are full accrual. You typically want to make sure that, they should report revenues in excess of expenditures in most cases to account for greater capital needs, infrastructure, those kind of things with your systems and to provide for depreciation of your systems. So the first one I'm going to cover is wastewater. So wastewater, you'll see for fiscal year '23, expenses exceeded revenues by about $777,000. Keep in mind, this includes depreciation, which for the year was about $1.2 million. Over the past five years altogether, expenses have exceeded revenues by $3 million. Again, that's including wastewater has the most capital asset. And so if it's hit, we'll be biggest an active depreciation each year. I'm going to go to the next slide, which is your cash print, so back in 2018.
As a question, let's clarify, when you said depreciation, okay, this is a book, you know, of accounting depreciation. So the revenues, the expenses were less, more than the revenues. When you said depreciation, can you explain to the audience? We have depreciated that, so we expensed that, but the money should be still there, am I right?
So the cat, so it doesn't, depreciation won't impact your cash flow. So when the assets were bought, they go on the, the balance sheet up in the asset section and then over their useful life, they are written off against expense. The wastewater has the most infrastructure assets, so every year, you're writing off a certain portion of those purchase costs.
I understand.
And then, but it does not impact cash. I would encourage, you have your statement of cash flows, which is quite handy for this, which is on page 27, and it breaks out those non-cash related expenses.
But you said at the beginning, this was healthy, this is not healthy.
The.
This, this fund, it's not, expended expenses exceed our revenues. I know, we can play with the words depreciation and depreciation, I have a background in that, so that's why I'm asking this. So when you're saying that, that's not healthy, because depreciation has to be accounted.
Right, it has to be accounted for.
Yes.
I'm just taking it as in, in a, in a sense of your cash flow.
So you need to clarify that though, yes, please do, because we don't want to give an impression that's not correct to the public.
Right, right, the cash, the cash flow, which was on the next slide, is a positive trend. The expenses have exceeded the revenues each of the last five years, that's something to consider as we're looking at, especially as the infrastructure ages, because more money is going to have to be put into the infrastructure.
Eventually, we'll have to replace those depreciated, so we'll need money for that.
Right.
So let's, let's just clarify that, please.
Right, right, so yes, those assets will have to be replaced as they age out.
So we'll be needing money.
Right, right. And so back in two thousand and eighteen, there was a big debt that was paid off um in the wastewater fund, which reduced the cash flow. Um, and so now we're seeing that start to creep back up over the last couple of years. Uh, so cash ended up at uh one point three million, a little over one point three million. Um, which is about. A nine hundred thousand dollar increase over the last five years. So that is a positive trend. Um, and cash has increased over the past two years. But yes, definitely something you want to make sure that resources are being accumulated in the fund to account for the infrastructure.
Thank you. That's very important, because when we need to go buy something, five hundred thousand dollars, we don't have it.
Right.
So that has to be, that's not healthy.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Watch, yeah, watch, always watch the cash flow.
Yes.
Um, sanitation fund, I'm going to next. Um, so again, this one has. In total, over the past five years, revenues have exceeded expenses by nine hundred and forty-two thousand. Um, fiscal year twenty-three, revenues exceeded expenses by two hundred and fifty-two thousand. So that is positive. You'll see that line, that revenue line uh between two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, we're pretty close. With the expenditure lines, and then we saw that break off in twenty-one, where we have a higher net income. Back, and that started back in twenty-one, and that's continued forward. The cash trend. In sanitation fund, you will see though, is zero. And that is going to be, again, uh, you can see the explanation for that on the statement of cash flows. You have your debt payments, um, and it has historically borrowed cash from the wastewater fund, which did have cash. Um, and so that has taken some time to rectify with those increased revenues that started in twenty twenty-one. I am going to go to the queen mine next, which is our, again, our revenue expense. You'll see that nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, when COVID was um. Going really heavy, you'll see those revenues and expenditure lines were very close. They crisscrossed in twenty twenty. And then they flipped back over in twenty-one, and then you'll see back in twenty-two, we started to see those lines, that spread increase. Um, so again, we had a end of the year at one point two million in revenue, nine hundred and thirteen thousand in expense. Um, and over the past five years, revenues have exceeded expenses by six hundred and ninety-four thousand.
And we have something on depreciation for that?
That is also house, yes, you have depreciation, uh, that was a lot smaller, twelve thousand, twelve thousand in depreciation. For the queen mine fund, it has a lot less uh equipment and such on it. The cash trend, you'll see you have, you have those slight dips during two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty-one. And then we have seen that start to increase again on a positive trend. Um, so the queen mine fund cash has increased five hundred and seventeen thousand over the past five years. Um, so basically, our low point was twenty twenty, and then we have the increases back up to the one point three million. Are there any other questions? For me?
Uh, I, I do, I need to make a statement. When, when we do this, we have to, especially because. Uh, when we go to the wastewater, that's a, that's a big investment there.
Right.
Hopefully, this will be uh placed in bold points, that's so we are aware of it. Because I know down the road, nothing long-term, and based on what management has told us, we have to have funding for this.
Right.
Because we have some old machinery that we have to take care of. So I, I, we need to make sure. I know you guys come in and you just one plus one and everything's good. No. Uh, please, you know, do it and make a recommendation, because we're making decisions based on what you're finding.
Right.
And you, uh, none of us here are accountants.
Right.
So it has to be clear to the public as well.
Right, and I think we had the one slide where we mentioned that you want to make sure you have a net income in all your enterprise funds. Uh, to account for future depreciation capital outlays. Um, and particularly in the wastewater, given that it has such a big.
We did raise our wastewater wells this year to start catching up on.
Right.
We haven't raised them in eight years, so.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, that, that ten.
Yeah, so yeah, yeah, you can see with the trends, it's, it gets needed. Um.
Yeah.
To do that. Um, I do want to, you know, take the time to thank Carrie and Mr. Park and Ashley and the whole finance department. Uh, for all the work they do to get ready for the audit. It's one of my, my favorite audits since I've been down here. One, because you have a great city. Um, the two, the staff is so great, and they, they are so ready for us. It's not even funny when we walk in the board, so.
Well, hopefully you won't be having to be in the lunchroom.
I want it there all the more time.
I don't mind the lunchroom, okay, that's all right, thank you.
I walk in, they're all their computers in our lunchroom. Any questions? All right, thank you very much for that uh presentation and. All right, um, moving on, uh, we have the next six items. Well, it's a hobby show. But just quickly, uh, what we're doing here with these next six items, especially, it's just basically updating our. Our building codes to come up to the newer codes. There, we always make assumptions in each one of these based on our needs, so um that's. Everybody looks at all this and go, uh, it's just that we're trying to stay up with the best, that to keep our. Our city as, as good a thing as we can, or still, right. With that, um, I'm gonna start with. And I, if you think I'm gonna read every one of these tonight, you're crazy. I'm gonna do the ordinance as we should, so I'm for, this is discussion of positive approval of the ordinance of notice of intent. Okay, to adopt ordinance oh twenty-four oh four, this is amended city code. Uh, with uh updating to the two thousand and eighteen international building code. Um, the, and so on and so forth. So. Um, I want us all to have any questions as we go through this, but hope we'll see what the. I don't know what, if you wanna make a present date on each one, or dissent your questions, how would you like it?
I'll dissent the question.
Okay, okay, so in the past, you were asked where, what code, and they say international billing code, so you're going to the make the latest edition, is that what this is, right?
This will be in the middle, uh.
Well, that kind of sort of right, okay. But my big question is, is when I, when I read this, what's confusing me, it says this portion and that. Is it, are we gonna be able to refer to that book and everything's gonna apply? And if not, are you gonna compile what just? Um, applies to us and have that available on our website? Does that make sense?
Oh, correct, we're gonna, so. For the twenty eighteen, there's gonna be three books there that I have to look through, but uh these are the ones that we stripped out of there. And changed so to fit in.
Right, so with that said, is that struck out? Is that right? We're strike down or whatever? Or just, are those all gonna be available on the website? So, okay, quickly, I click on this, it opens up, and then I can see. This is what applies to me, not I do something and it doesn't apply, because it's been struck.
Correct, it'll be in the city code.
But, but it'll be, it, you, it'll be like labeled, this is.
Correct.
Cause, and it's gonna be easy to find, and I, I don't know, it's been news. Cause that's the, the worst part is trying to find that, and then you get the wrong one.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's been one of the biggest complaints, because people get really grumpy about that.
Correct. If anybody has any questions, I can help them find it too. And I'll help them through the process. I know it's gonna be a big change, but we're here to help.
Yeah, this, this is dealing with plumbing, electrical, pretty much the whole game. Yeah, and so. All right, so four is a nine four, which is the uh, or uh, ten to adopt ordinance oh twenty-four oh four. Do we have questions on that, or any of the exclusions that are included in that one? Um, so we're. What, the ten to um, intent to adopt, or that's how we're stating it. And you're saying that this changes are going to be on the website and you think there's several of them?
There'll be, there'll be a city code, and the library has a book as well, that you could look, look through. For I R C, the I D C, and the international uh existing building codes as well.
Well, I do know that, that. The. When we change ordinance or anything in the past. And we have one of these item numbers. It's usually how stated. And then the change is there, so it makes sense when I'm reading it. And here, it's just a word here or there. Are you going to come back and show us that? Or is this adequate, just showing us the change, the words, the wording? And not the complete sentence or the complete paragraph? Well, if you pick up your entire packet, you would see all this is listed, everything is written down here. So this is the notice of intent, because all of them take two hearings. And so when we come back, but nothing will change, the motion is just to adopt. The actual code and then any changes that might, might happen, but all the written part is right there. In your, that's why the packet's always two hundred pages, because it is all written, and anybody can refer to that anytime. Okay?
And all of it's been ten years since we updated from the last code, so that's a huge factor, a lot of change since then. Not only that, uh, going up to the twenty eighteen, uh, insurance rates, rates should be adjusted slightly. But that's last, they busted on to the twenty eighteen.
Better.
Yeah.
Not.
It'll be better, it'll be better.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were behind the curve, so we don't need the national standard.
Makes that happier. So, did I answer your question, and that, yeah. It seems like your packet's a little narrow, it's usually two hundred pages, so you would see that.
Is that all it, that's all we got? Is that all they print out?
They should have gotten it all. There, you guys got, they're front to back. And you, you also got your audit in a separate binder, in a separate, that's the difference.
So that should, should tell you all the, the additions and all the numbers and. And then it agrees, so. All right, uh, one more questions for uh ordinance oh twenty-four oh four. Seeing an uh call for a motion.
No, I don't think Joe has ever made you read the whole thing if you don't want to.
I would move.
Motion.
The notice, the ten to adopt ordinance zero dash twenty-four dash oh.
That's good.
Second. Yeah, this will be a motion and a second to approve ordinance oh dash twenty-four oh four as listed on our agenda. Which be amending, adopting uh the twenty eighteen, some eighteen international building codes. Uh, I have the other parties, so. Vote please.
Councilmember Hill.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes unanimously. On the next one is another motion. Uh, intent to adopt ordinance oh dash twenty-four oh five, this is also amending the plumbing international plumbing code. As shown uh on our agenda. Questions for item five? I'll take a motion on that one.
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance zero dash twenty-four dash zero five.
Second.
On the motion, second, we approve ordinance, intent to adopt ordinance oh dash twenty-four oh five. Which is amending the city code, adopting the international, new uh, two thousand and eighteen international plumbing code. Roll.
Councilmember Hill.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi.
Number six, this is a doc, intent to adopt ordinance oh dash twenty-four oh six, this is amending the code. Um, or the electrical code. We have questions on item six. Seeing now, and now a motion. Who's my motion?
Your turn.
I move to approve the notice intent to adopt ordinance zero dash twenty-four dash zero six.
I second so.
All right, seconds are even. Thank you. We have a motion and a second for item six was the doc ordinance oh dash twenty-four oh six. As shown in our agenda, which will be adopting the new electrical codes. Um. For two thousand and seventeen, I guess. Uh, roll.
Councilmember Hill.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes unanimously. Moving on, this is item seven, this is a note, um, notice of intent to adopt ordinance oh dash oh eight. Amending the city code, uh, dealing with mechanical issue, mechanical problems. Do we have questions about the new mechanical? Thinking now, we'll move a motion on that.
I move to approve the.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance oh dash twenty-four oh eight, this is amending the mechanical codes. Um, for two thousand, of the two thousand and eighteen, roll.
Councilmember Phil.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes unanimously. Two more to go. This one is a notice of intent to adopt ordinance oh dash twenty-four oh nine, this is amending the city code. Uh, dealing with international property maintenance, this is the maintenance code. Do we have any dangerous buildings, so on and so forth? Any questions?
Yeah, what is, what, the dangerous building, yeah, what is?
Well, something is ready to fall down.
Okay.
Correct, if anything's ready to fall down, the law related, um. But we also use that for borders and.
Yeah, something handy.
That's what we're litigating right now, what we weren't.
Correct.
It's how some structures, not just code, I just thought maybe it was a bad code that we were getting rid of.
Correct.
Very cool, thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other questions on, if there are more than nine of them?
I move to approve the notice intent to adopt ordinance uh oh dash twenty-four dash zero nine.
Second.
And a motion, second to adopt. The intent, the intent to adopt ordinance oh dash twenty-four oh nine, so we'll be amending the, to the two thousand and eighteen maintenance codes. Hold on.
Councilmember Hill.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Yeah, aye.
One more, this is uh, item nine, that's just the notice of intent to adopt ordinance oh dash twenty-four ten, this is amending the city code. For international fuel, gas codes, and energy conservation codes. Questions on this one, this brings us up into the two thousand and eighteen codes.
Can I, can, can you just give us like a summary of what this is about? If you.
Oh, no, no, fuel, gas, probably about like uh your gas lines, your stalls, your heaters.
Okay.
Boiler rooms, uh, et cetera.
Has to do with all these uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Appliances.
A bunch of appliances in there.
Uh huh.
Um. And then they'll be for uh energy conservation to make sure we're putting up BTUs out.
Would that be enforcing new like requirements for these equipments, or I mean.
There has been, there's been a lot of changes since two thousand and twelve, so they'll be.
Okay, okay, with all the changes with all the codes.
New materials that come in and implemented.
Will that affect anything that's in existence, anything that's grandfathered in, will that affect anything that's existing?
No.
Oh, so just the public service then.
And just, just one uh comment, when we designed the new city hall. Uh, we did all the design work in accordance with the two thousand and twelve, so we were anticipating. The code improvements of, excuse me, in two thousand and eighteen. So, so basically, we already designed our new home in accordance with the standards that you're now adopting.
All right, but anything that's uh pre-existing, you're not gonna go and just for the public, you know.
Yeah, take out a building for a bit, or something, then you gotta meet the.
Okay, yeah.
And that's on all of these.
Yes, on all of these, that just, you clarify that. Yes, on all of these, that just, you clarify that.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, any other questions for the good old fuel gap, so, I don't think we can. I'll enter ten, motion on nine.
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance zero dash twenty four dash ten.
Second.
The motion, second to. To approve the notice and intent to adopt ordinance oh dash twenty four ten, this will be, uh, two thousand eighteen. Gas and energy codes, although, oh, one. Roll.
Councilmember Hill.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Sowe.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes. United, so we, uh, we do have two more, so we have a number ten, this is a. Discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance oh twenty four eleven. This is repealing and replacing chapter seven, building official and, uh, refill of conflicted ordinances. That one just updates what, who you are?
Um, it's just changing the wording from what was in the twenty fourth to, to what's in the twenty eighteen. It was just a wording that was changed, not specifically.
You know more about what building official means?
Yes, for it.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion on this one.
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance oh dash twenty four dash eleven.
Okay.
Hey, thank you, we have motion to, uh, adopt a notion of intent for ordinance oh dash twenty four eleven, roll.
Councilmember Hill.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sowe.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously, so move. And this one will be the notice of intent to adopt ordinance oh dash twenty four twelve. This is amending the city codes for the health and sanitation and cemetery, um. Codes. Uh, any questions on? I'm a. This is Jiff again, uh, this is, this is. You guys have been working on this a long time.
Yeah, it's, it's a long process.
Yeah, and I, I, it's just to bring us up into the more health codes and so on, this, and I can remove all litter and so on.
Oh, what's a cemetery?
I'm not sure what.
Okay, I said, that's just great.
Yeah.
And.
At, in the, in the discussion, you said that mission city code nine point four enable us to limit the fire danger to our city from vacant properties? And those tails would ducted. Is this? When you say litter, are you talking about, what? Trash and?
Trash, hoarding, um.
Hoarding, so that will affect, that's why I wanted to get.
Delivering laminated buildings.
Robish, you know, the laminated buildings are fire hazards around here, I really gotta get a hand on those.
Okay. All right, any other questions? And now, motion on item eleven. One, Rob and Sharon, that's really good.
I move to approve the notice of intent to, okay. I, I, I move to approve this, you wanted to do it?
Now we all want.
Okay, I approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance, uh, oh dash twenty four dash twelve.
Second.
Yeah.
Thank you everyone, we are busy doing these, so, and we still gotta do it one more time. So this is the motion and a second to adopt notion of intent, ordinance oh dash twenty four twelve. And it's amending the health and sanitation and other provisions of the code. Uh, roll.
Councilmember Hill.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sowe.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, motion passes unanimously. So, next one will be item twelve, this is a discussion of possible approval of the building inspector permit extension. Expiration and fee refund policy. That one, I'll let you explain.
Yeah, okay, so we just had, had a lot of miscommunications with people coming in saying, uh, this person said this or this person said that. Now I wanna create a policy where everybody knows this is the way we're gonna be doing it now, and they have a chart. They have a chart here and, and they'll, they'll be given this, everybody would be giving this for building permit. And they'll know what's, what's gonna be their obligation, you know, to hold, to hold their permit and keep it, uh, active.
With some building permits, you don't do any work on it, then they expire, but they think they still have an active one.
Correct, they wanna come back and continue doing the work without having to get a new one. And then they'll ask for, you know, numerous extensions, and that takes time and effort to do each one.
More, that's why I ran. Another question?
Yeah, so, just, uh, what you just said, uh, basically, uh, all new buildings, we'll be getting the checklist, if you're not saying, uh, it's a new, I, yeah.
They'll be getting this paper later, okay. Of our new.
Oh, okay, okay.
Of our idealized checklist, okay, nothing.
Maybe we can do it in checklist format.
Correct. Don't part our work out there, yeah.
Okay.
Seeing nothing, I'll, okay, motion for item twelve.
I move to approve the building inspector permit extensions, expiration and fee refund policy.
Second.
Now, a motion, second to approve discussion, to approve the building inspection extensions, uh, expiration and refund policy. All those there, everybody is saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, there are none, the ayes have it. And on the thirteen, this is a possible approval of another notice of intent to adopt ordinance oh. Twenty four oh seven, amending city code by adopting following publications in place of current publications. Now this is all with two thousand eighteen fire codes, so on and so forth, um, this is actually on a hard sheet now. Hey. New face. And go ahead and one little quick little, this basically bring us up to two thousand eighteen.
Um, getting the mayor council. Excuse my voice, um, yeah. We're, we wanna move up to the two thousand eighteen international fire code, this is what the state, uh, state fire marshal's office is currently, they moved up last year. Um, basically, um, we needed to do that to, well, keep up with the, the state. And we've been working on this, um, since I became fire marshal, uh, four years ago. Um, so it has taken us a long time to get here, mine wasn't near as extensive as the building department. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, um, with, uh, what I'm proposing. There's a few, uh, amendments that we added, um.
When it happens, she brought a three quarter, that five eight.
Yeah, that, I think that was in there, but either way, um. If the water flow, um, from the, from the city water. Isn't adequate enough, then we, we have some order now, that we would make if they were named the first thing. So that, that was the biggest change, not city water.
Where's the worms at? Don't want to say the water. That would, so, question of the chief.
So. Yeah.
Got some notes there?
So, uh, they just be building, so, so big, we are you talking about, um. We should be installing sprinkler systems, uh, is that going to be required with this new code? You said something about, um, sprinkling system, which I hadn't thought about.
Yeah, anything that's there stays, but then go ahead on that.
Yeah, we're talking mainly a new construction or a total remodel or change of occupancies. Um, specifically when you put a residence above a business or something like that. That would require you to put sprinklers into, uh, into the older.
Might have been helpful in the last one, because apartments above, the apartments below, and so, so. This is what everybody's going to realize and it would, uh, help a lot of things.
I'm, I'm a big fire steward. I think you don't know.
I just, did you say that it would also be, um, remodels as well?
Um, to a certain extent, if, if they remodel more than fifty percent of the building. And it would trigger, um, the current code, but basically, it's a new construction. A new construction may, depending on the occupancy type, it could figure sprinklers. So it could be an old building, and they change it into something, into a hotel, or it wasn't before that. Um, and that would, they're gonna make it into a hotel that's so big, um, that might, that could trigger sprinklers. Just like the Warner Hotel kind of.
Requirements. Now it's addition. Yeah, it will help us out a lot, you know. Not go to the offensive mode quite so against, absolutely. All right, any other questions, we're gonna attend a motion for item thirteen, what?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance zero dash twenty four dash zero seven.
Second.
And a motion, a second to adopt, uh, the, um, motion of, notion of intent to adopt ordinance oh dash twenty four oh seven. This is amending the fire codes, bringing up to two thousand eighteen international fire codes, uh, roll.
Councilmember Hill.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sowe.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Hi, passes unanimously. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Jesus. Now we got our chief. This is item fourteen, this is a discussion of possible approval in donating surplus police vehicles to poorer rural communities. From our, our, our police department, gotta get my head around the fire, go ahead, turn around there.
All right, thank you, mayor and council, uh, basically, probably the easiest thing tonight, we got all those vehicles that are no longer of use to us. I had, uh, two chiefs reach out to me, one was the fire chief of the Water Wheel Fire District, which is a little north of Prescott. Um, they service a very small rural community, um, and they, right now, uh. I'm tired of the mayor, he's like, I'm forever. I, they, they service an area that's very, uh, loosely populated forest area. Um, and their entire fleet consists of one tender truck. They have no response vehicles, their, uh, captains and lieutenants, uh, are using their POVs to try to get around and deal with things. Um, they heard through the grapevine that I had some vehicles that were of no use to me, um, so they reached out and asked if they could at least try to use them. Um, they're willing to put some money into them and at least make them serviceable for them, which we are not. Um, the second one was, uh, Yavapai College, uh, which is also on the other side of Prescott. If you know anything about chiefs, once the word starts rolling, it starts rolling. Um, so the Yavapai College PD also reached out and said, hey, if you got one that we can use for our police department, we'd appreciate it. Uh, they have nine officers, including their chief, again, very small, very rural college, um. And he said community college, and I'm like, well, get your college to pay for it, and he goes, well, we're a community college, but it's one building, and I was like, oh, okay, say no more. So that's basically what it is, they reached out to us because, uh, these are my surplus vehicles that I was gonna get rid of anyway. Um, they serve no practical use to our police department, they are well beyond their service life, um, and have no service to us. So I'd rather give them somebody that's could use them, because they can't afford to buy them or can't get grants like I do. Um, so if we can help them out, I really wanna do that.
And the lights still work?
Sure. There's one where the front of the light bar works, but the back that's not.
They're, they only go forward.
Yeah, yeah, so, we're, we're okay.
Uh, questions?
Have these been fully depreciated, if they come up the bottom?
Uh, one of them is a two thousand and eight with three hundred and sixty five thousand. Do you wanna give me five grants for it, no, I'll take it, otherwise. I want some of the lights, but I'll do it. All right, well, I got, I got a couple more, and then provide.
Uh, any other questions, I think it's helping out whoever and, you know, we're lucky that, that he was able to find some. Good grants that we can, we're gonna have some new vehicles, so, um, say lebe to the old ones. Um, I'll just make a motion that we approved donating surplus police vehicles to the, to rural communities. Uh, from our police department, please.
Second.
And motion, second, to approve the donation of ours surplus police vehicles, all of them, second by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay, very nice, ayes have it, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last one is, uh, will be discussion of possible approval of agreement with APS, providing solar panels. Our covered parking with the Bisbee Senior Center, and we have our APS agent here, but I will let this. Uh, city manager blocking, that is.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, it's not very often we get to the fifteenth item before I have anything to say. But, uh, anyway, here we are, and, uh, this is something that, uh, we've been talking about with APS now for a couple of years. Um, and, uh, the, you know, in, in the discussion, you'll see that the, um. Arizona Corporation Commission approved this program some years ago, uh, which basically provides, uh, for solar panels. To be placed in certain public places, um, of a certain size or larger, and that certain size is twenty parking spaces. Um, or, or more, and, uh, but essentially it was an extension of an earlier program that you all recognize. From seeing that at our local, uh, schools. And so, um, Richard came to us a couple of years ago and asked us if we had a place, and of course, my first thought was city hall. Uh, but unfortunately, we don't have twenty contiguous parking spaces at city hall, so it didn't quite work, but. Um, we have more than enough parking at Bisbee Senior Center, uh, and, and, um, collectively, we determined that. Uh, this was the ideal place, uh, to, to put this. Uh, the magic of today, however, is that program is ending. And by the end of this year, uh, this program will disappear, uh, also by an act of the corporation commission. Because apparently, uh, they recently made a decision that, um, the expenditure of public dollars. Um, on a, on a public place was not what public utilities should be doing. Richard probably got that down more openly than I knew, so this is the last year we'll be able to take advantage of this, so that's why we're for you tonight. Um, asking you, uh, to approve this agreement with APS, which, um, has been in the works for some time. Uh, Joe has reviewed it and approved it, so, uh, so it's got city attorney's approval at this point, and. I would like to introduce Richard Rosales, uh, who is our top guy at APS. Who I think all of you already know, and, uh, I know he wants to say a few words to us tonight about the program and what we're about to do.
Thank you, Steve, mayor, members of the council, thank you for, uh, allowing me just to share a few words about this program. We're excited to bring it to Bisbee if the agreement is approved by, uh, by the mayor and council. Um, it's going to be about a hundred and sixty two, uh, kilowatt system. Provides solar covered parking for the members of the senior center or guests of the senior center, but we'll never. And then that facility will get a, a credit based on the size of the system, so. Um, like you said, they are going to be ending the program, and, uh, we are looking forward to moving it here if, if desired. And, uh, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
No, I, I see it as a real, they don't really do much out there at night, and so during the day, when the sun's shining, they'll, they'll use the power. And it'll help the, help things, so.
It's a twenty year agreement, and so, uh, at the end of the, the one, the big question is whether you give it to the end of the year. So we either turn it over to, to the city, um, as is, or we remove it and we put it back to the way it was. Only came upon, and so, just depends on how much, uh, the solar panels are still functioning, degrading, and then you could move it up to the city at this time.
And mayor, one thing I forgot to mention, uh, a moment ago, was that this probably will enable us to start looking at. Making some changes, uh, at the senior center, particularly with regard to our heating and cooking facilities. Uh, because when you see your, uh, accounts payable list, hoping, once a month, our propane bill is, uh, fairly. Um, extravagant, uh, at that location, and like, extravagant is the wrong word, um, but. Um, but, but we pay a lot of, we pay a lot of money for propane gas to heat that building. And once we have this in there, we're gonna start looking for ways to convert, uh, to, to electric for both heating and for, uh, the cooking facilities, which. You've all seen the big cat iron stove in the place, and it's, uh, it's a gashin.
Yeah, this is, I think, I want to clarify on this, because the agreement is basically you are utilizing the parking and you pay us in exchange. Okay, so what, is Steve, are you saying you're gonna give us free, uh, solar, so how is that gonna work then?
I can explain it, so the way the ser, the system works is the, the, the energy generated from that system goes right back to the grid to power.
That's what I thought, it's not going to the senior center.
Well, it's the same thing, I mean, you know, we can't control which way the electrons go, but you are getting the credit.
We're just getting the credit, I read that, we just getting the credit, I just want to clarify this also, we are just basically leasing you a spot. And for that spot, you get, will get, I read that, unless you can.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true, uh, the senior center, if you decide to utilize that, that electricity, you have to pay for it, like everyone else, am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, so I think what he's using is, that, like, what you were talking about earlier with the, the cattle, that they're using to depreciate, not depreciation, but. The difference in cost, right, 'cause we're giving you a credit on that bill.
Right.
For two hundred and fifty dollars every month, so it's gonna lower that bill each month for twenty year, for the next twenty years.
Yeah.
And, um, and it's basically paying new for the yeasman, you know, to use that, that space.
Yes, and this is what I thought, we are letting use this space, and in legal, in this space. You're gonna generate electricity, which you're gonna sell to, to the grid, or send back on the grid. But if the senior citizen, uh, the center wants electricity, they have to pay for it, am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, you're still paying for it.
But we get the credit to offset.
Two, two hundred, two, two thousand and fifty cents, that's what I'm saying.
No, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, two fifty per kilowatt, is it an example, we'll, we'll come to approximately two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Yeah, I saw that, two fifty, uh, two, two thousand and fifty cents per a hundred kilowatt, it says a tier.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm saying, Mayor, is, is we're not getting free electricity. We're gonna get two hundred and fifty dollars, and maybe the two hundred and fifty, fifty dollars will cover our electric bill. We're not getting anymore, unless Richard can say it differently.
Yeah, but we're not getting anything now, now we pay.
We're getting two hundred and fifty dollars, we're leasing the parking lot, that's all we're getting.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not getting anything now.
I know, I know.
So now we're paying two fifty, now, now it's gonna be a walk.
Yeah, but if we use the electricity, we have to pay for the electricity. I, I think Steve was trying to say, oh, we can, we can use, uh, more equipment.
No.
That's what he said?
No, I didn't say that. Uh, there was, there was no, there never once did I say we were gonna get free like.
He's saying now we can change and we'll start using electricity, so we can save some money, you said that. Now we, what, basically, it's, it's clear, it's very clear, uh, contract, you use our parking lot, you generate electricity, you pay us two hundred and fifty dollars. That's it, it ends here, and then if we need to use some of that electricity, we have to pay.
But it's two fifty per month.
I know, I know, two fifty.
The next twenty years.
I know, we're getting two hundred and fifty dollars, we should fine.
When we talk about saving money, is by not paying for pro, propane, that lowers our bill out there, and instead, we replace. The money we would have paid for propane with electricity, which we're now getting a credit on.
You're not getting, you're getting just two hundred and fifty dollars.
Not a credit?
You got, no, that's a.
That's a credit.
That's a lease, it's not a credit, you're getting two hundred and fifty dollars for leasing the parking lot, it's like me leasing a shop for two hundred and fifty dollars.
I have a question, yeah, yeah.
It's not a credit.
Okay.
If that goes into our accounts payable as a.
Yeah, yeah, it goes, goes into account payable, it's not the issue, what I'm saying, that's a clear, like, you lease it a spot, and you buying electricity. You have to still buy it, uh, okay, unless Richard can say no, and.
We agree with that, but we're gonna find at the end of the year, there's three thousand dollars in credits that. And have before, hold on, and we can use that three thousand dollars a year that we receive in credit. To make conversions that will cause us to use less.
That's fine.
Less propane fuel, so there is a benefit.
It is a benefit, so no question.
About credits and.
Yeah, exactly, that's fine, yeah, it's a benefit, we get two hundred and fifty dollars per month, yeah, it's, it's a good benefit.
If you look at your propane bill, it's.
It, it's a good benefit, it's no, I'm not saying, there's no benefit, so it has to be clarified.
Any more questions already?
Yeah.
Well, I was looking at the financial report, and that's a one hundred and thirty-five seventy-two. Here, uh, for propane, um, I see that we're getting, I'm gonna use your word credit.
Don't, don't.
I'm sorry, that's sorry, I need several. But it, it's gonna offset what we're seeing right now, and what I heard Steve said is that we. We, we're moving forward to eliminate propane, right?
That's my goal.
That's the hope, um, so I see it as a way of, of benefit. Even though we're minimalizing that space, I see it as a benefit.
Hush and hark, and cool, because you're out there. Don't forget that one. Thank you.
No questions? Yeah, sure, the two dollars and fifty cents per kilowatt is set for twenty years, it will never change, correct? No matter that the cost of electricity goes up the next twenty years.
And is this guaranteed to, uh, a hundred kilowatt, or it could be more, we could generate more than, I don't know.
It's, no, whatever the system size is.
So it could be more?
It could be, yeah, it, no, 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 it's set.
It's set, okay, I just wanted to.
We also wanna clarify, we would not even, we wouldn't pay you less either if the solar panels didn't generate.
So just go ahead and practice straight up?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, uh, maintenance, I, who does, do you guys do the maintenance for twenty years, and so we don't have to mess with them?
There's no cost to the city to install it, we, we pay all the costs, we get the contractors, and then maintenance is all on us for the twenty years. Um, there's such a common occurrence because the solar covered parking RVs that know the current numbers, and they tend to hit it, we come out.
Yeah, I did that.
So we just need to make sure this happens.
All right, we'll do that.
The overall benefit for maybe, uh, putting this in for you is.
Your overall benefit for us?
Yeah.
Is we get the generation of solar credits that, that come from the system. So we have a clean energy commitment to be one hundred percent clean by twenty fifty, and this just helps us get to our goal, and so.
So will we get a, a tax break then?
No, because we own the system. And that's the common misconception with any rooftop solar, you have to own it to get the tax credit, there's, anyways, that's another.
The good thing is, it won't be depreciated.
Yeah.
We'll take the.
Yeah, you'll take the depreciation, after twenty years, you probably have to depreciate.
Well, yeah, we went through that earlier.
All right. We have a motion to, to get this last one out.
I move to approve the agreement with APS to provide solar panels on covered parking at the Bisbee Senior Center parking lot, second.
A motion, second, to approve the APS contract, provide the, the solar system on the Bisbee Center. Take a bye by saying aye.
Aye.
Very nice habits, thank you, Richard. Oh, yeah, thunder. You have the answers. All right, how about the city manager's report?
Well, I s, I started the day with no items, but city manager's report, and this meeting took so long, I must have. So I just said, better go back to you. Um, but some good stuff, uh, first thing I wanna do is, I wanna introduce, uh, my friend Stephanie from the office, Stephanie, that you stand up and. And waves, uh, Stephanie is, uh, working with us today and tomorrow, um, and with the added bonus that she gets to come to a council meeting. And, uh, Stephanie is a, um, uh, a Marvin, there's a program at ASU called the, uh, Marvin Andrews Scholarship Program. She graduated from that program, uh, with an MPA, uh, and since then has been working for the city of Scottsdale in the city manager's office. Uh, doing a variety of things, I guess it's pretty much whatever the city manager wants you to do. And, uh, so, uh, and, and with the city manager's encouragement, um, his, uh, his MPA graduates have an opportunity to. Uh, go to different communities around the state, uh, to learn what like and businesses like in other communities other than their own. Um, and, uh, so, and, and, and one more thing, uh, about Stephanie is, um, uh, she joined me as a recipient this year of the Gabe Zimmerman Award. Uh, and, and her category was emerging leader, so, um, I've had an opportunity to. Uh, see some of the work that she has done from afar, because I, I, I know I've met her bosses, and, uh. Uh, I think one of these days, um, and we had quite a talk about this, uh, over lunch today. Uh, you know, the city management, the near future, the middle future, the far future, or the future. And, uh, but what we do know, uh, in Arizona, and we've been talking about this for almost twenty years now. Uh, is that the inventory of city managers has dwindled markedly in the last twenty years. Uh, and so, uh, schools, uh, like ASU with the Marvin program, and, uh, uh, U of A with their program. And even now, uh, Northern has a program for MPA, they're sort of in the first year, second year of it. Um, but that's giving us, um, uh, educated, uh, MPA graduates, but, um, but they stay with the program. That even as graduates, uh, and, and, and then their professors prevail upon all of us. In the different communities around the state to, uh, host them and, and sponsor them for different activities, so. Um, and, and particularly proud to have Stephanie working here this week, because, because like I say, we are, uh, uh, fellow recipients of the Gabe Zimmerman Award, which is. Due, due to our speeding in Southern Arizona, and so, so anyway, uh, Stephanie.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Patton, and members of the council, it's been honored to be here and spend some time in Bisbee and learn about one of the best here, so, thank you.
Issue, last eighty-five. I love the Wildcats. We're happy about.
There's a couple of those, she carries a couple of those around with her, too. Both of them, wow. Okay, um, next, um, I, this doesn't really need doing, except that I feel, um, a, uh, obligation. Uh, to do so, uh, particularly after, uh, something like eight different agenda items tonight, um, updating, uh, all of our codes. Our, our codes represent thousands of pages of regulations, um, that building inspectors everywhere are expected to know well enough to be able to pass a test. Uh, to get a certificate to qualify to go out and inspect buildings in our community. Um, and Javier has not only done that, but he has recently been promoted to building inspector with children's time, so. I, I think we oughta give it up for Javier.
Call Matt, this is my fire.
By the way, uh, Matt, he handed the job, he posted the position, and people applied for it, and he had to interview, for his own job, and, uh. And I, I was, he asked me to sit in on the interviews, and when Javier walked into the interview, and he was wearing something I've never seen before. A tie. So, anyway. No, I didn't, I didn't really think about that, but. We'll have another opportunity, I'm sure. So anyway, welcome Javier, it's, it's good to have you out there, especially in the last week.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, so, um, just one other note of, of interest, uh, a couple of council meetings ago, you. Um, adopted, uh, an action to, um. Donate dumpsters, uh, three hundred and fifty of them, uh, to a community in Mexico, and I didn't write it down, so I can't pronounce it tonight. Um, however, uh, the, what's worthy of note is there are trucks leaving the yard. Eighteen-wheelers leaving the yard the last couple of days with dumpsters on them, so perhaps at long last. The old dumpsters, we can allow them to use, will go, go on to a better place. Um, and then the last item I have tonight is, um, uh, Chief Richardson would like to, uh, take a few minutes of the city manager's time to. Uh, uh, report, uh, his perspective of what happened on Ashland State. Notice I call it Ashland State.
You're very new, Mayor and Council, again, um, um, briefly, here, I just wanted to give you guys an update on. On the, the amount of firefighters, engines, and stuff that we had on scene, um. We had crews from Naco, Douglas, Tombstone, and Sunny Side Fire in, in Douglas. Um. Total of sixteen firefighters from Bisbee, um, about eleven of those were off duty, um. We had a total of thirty-eight firefighters on that fire most of the night, um, until early in the morning. There was eight fire engines, one ladder truck, uh, two tenders. Um, and numerous other vehicles, brush traps and stuff like that, so, that's, just to give you an idea of, of that. Real quick update on what I learned from the engineer today is, um, I know the let's-in loft, uh. People are really eager to get in there, that roof is unsupported on the fireside. And, um, it's, it's very volatile and could collapse at any time. Um, I know, looking at the weather before I came here tonight, we're supposed to have thirty-five mile an hour winds tomorrow, uh, yes, so, um. I'd just like to make that aware to the public, um, please be safe, mind the boundaries, um, the caution tape. The fencing that we have, uh, please stay out of that, it's there for a reason, um, we're all about safety. We don't want anybody to get hurt, and all it would take is one brick to fall down on somebody, and, um, it could be over, so. Please, um, be in the public. Be aware. Um, I would like to recognize our guys, especially. We started out with three guys on that call, we were on, on an EMS call, and that was told him off. At nine, uh, fourteen, we were on another call, so, um. Pretty quickly, station A two got there, I can give you the times, um, the tone went off at. Twenty-one sixteen. Responded at twenty-one eighteen, we were on scene at twenty-one. Twenty-two. Um, we left the scene that morning at four thirty. Uh, just to get our trucks back in cer, in service, we knew that we still had hotspots, um, there was a lot of can covering, uh. Burning stuff, we just couldn't get to it, um, the ladder truck could not get to it in Douglas. Um, we don't, a ton of water on that thing, we still couldn't get it out, so. Uh, we got back to the station, got all of our trucks reloaded with hose, got all of our air packs re, um, charged up. And, uh, cleaned up a little bit, and at five thirty, we got turned out again for a fire. Um. And we stayed on that fire till, uh, ten o'clock that one, so, um, a lot of hours, and that was, that was all we had. Um, the majority of everybody in the room between, um, two and three in the morning, all the other fire departments. Uh, we stayed on it. Rest of the morning and the rest of the next day, all day, so, um. So, yeah, uh, not to toot our horn, horn, we did a, a great job, um, with the people that we had, the equipment that we had. We really did have it under, uh, under control, um, till we had that water issue, um. We improvised, we, uh, stretched out a couple of thousand feet of hose to get the Arizona water hydrants. Um, got back on it, and, um, and ultimately, we, we got it out, so. Um, I just wanna thank all the, thank you guys for all the support. And, uh, hope we don't have to do this again, but, yeah. If you guys have any, any, uh. Any questions about the fire that I can answer. any questions about the fire that I can answer for any other question.
San Jose also, they were standing by to take some calls, and.
Right.
While we were busy. Right?
San Jose was on standby. I, I thought we dispatched them out. Um, I, maybe there was a miscommunication with them. We dispatched not calling San Jose. But uh, I heard that San Jose was on standby and.
Yeah.
They were fired, but um for some reason they didn't show up. I, I, I thought they were just, so I.
But, but you didn't mention that, but they actually, though they weren't on the scene, they were also wanting to cover anything else that came in by, or.
That's, that's correct.
So I wanted to mention that. They were mining the stores.
Yeah, so this week, yeah. I'm not taking nothing with me soon.
No, no, it's.
Letting you know that who was on, on the fire, so.
Just want to make a couple of comments. I was, um, and, and I did uh talk to the uh chief at San Joe the next day, and thank her for being on standby, because uh, like I say, that's kind of like mining the store, because we had another alarm in town while we were all uptown, somebody would have had to respond, so we're happy. We have neighborhood departments who are willing to do that, so um, also, I think you can probably tell that Jimmy's not totally well um tonight, and, and he wasn't totally well last Wednesday either. And uh, and of course, being up all night and being in fire only made matters worse for him. Uh, so I, I want to make sure that people realize that uh Kevin and Andy, Captain Andy Castro, I, I want to call him lieutenant, but he's now a captain. Um, did a more than capable job of, of helping us pick up in the aftermath while Jimmy couldn't be with us, so couldn't be here. He's still with us. So um, I think that may be a little bit of an indication that some of the, what uh, what the chief and I have been talking about in terms of trying to build not just a fire department, but to build uh leadership over the long term, because um every once in a while, a chief retires, and uh, we like to uh start building a bank of, of folks that will be able to compete for the job uh when people like Jimmy decide to retire, so uh, that was a very positive development, and, and you know, I just want to uh throw a shout out to Kevin and Andy, because they really helped us a lot there.
Okay, and I, I know you weren't feeling well, but on a request from me personally, I wanted to get those thousand dollars for the art of the central school project, um, tan gallery today. I have to go in there and do bracing and stuff, and I did not want to put any of the artists in risk, so basically Jimmy, I, and Kevin pulled it all out of there, and they, and then they picked it up and took it in trucks and put it away, so thank you for that. I know it was like a sauna in there, but, but yeah, even so. You know, we have people who's ready to stand up and do what has to get done, that's important. All right, anything else?
With that, I'll make a motion to uh.
Aye.
Second.
Yes.